Now, although I said the county does a fantastic job, they've not been perfect to the dollar because they're estimating it this fall for something that they don't finalize until March. So in order to account for any variability in those estimates of new construction, we actually levy and recommend a levy that's slightly greater than what we think is actually going to happen if their estimates are on track. And we do that because if we ask for more, the county will knock us back to what we're entitled to. If we ask for less, we only get what we asked for. So we generally try to overshoot that a bit, knowing that it'll fall back into line once the county completes their work in springs and as they prepare final tax bills. I do also, just at the end, this is a final shout out for further information related to our annual visits, our annual financial reports, our monthly financials, and our fund balance reports. Those are all available on our website under the business office page in particular. You can find them there for more information and to see prior years.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board before I go to public participation?
I have a few additional comments, but I will add them when it comes time for the vote, if that's okay.
Okay, next then, we'll go to public participation for the tax levy hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Please note that this opportunity for public comment must be regarding the tax levy. If you have other topics that you would like to address the board with, please hold your comments until the regular meeting is reopened. Sue May.
on the couple of major influences to the tax levy and why we need to go for the maximum percentage? Wage increases, benefits, transportation increases, and the debt service and how that all plays into that?
So that was what I was going to say for the regular meeting. I could talk about it now. It doesn't matter when. So the actual vote is going to happen when we go back into the meeting. But to what Carl was speaking to about the major impacts of what is driving the recommendation at this point. So of the list that you provided, the first one, there's two major influencers. One is wages for our faculty and our staff. And the largest body of faculty members that are impacted by this are up for a new contract within next year. So they are in year five of their bargaining agreement. So there is an unknown in this five-year forecast on how we will settle that agreement. However, we are seeing other contracts being settled in our comparables, and that is giving us the indication that if the board has a desire to continue to remain competitive within and among the market, we will need these funds to make sure that that can come to realization. The second major thing that is impacting our unknowns right now is the life safety and capital plan with the enhanced accessibility study. We don't know how those results will fare. We don't know how we will fare with those results. And there are unknowns that could materialize or will likely materialize that we will need to invest in as we continue to maintain our buildings to the highest level possible in avoidance of going to the taxpayers for an additional referendum for maintaining the buildings that 67 is overseeing. When you look at benefit increases, that was also something you brought up, we are in the market of low double digits, so above 10% for benefit increases. We are tracking higher on claims than predicted because of health issues that are being experienced within our members or within our employees. So I think that we were budgeting or hoping it'd be around 10. We are above that at this point because of the claims that we're seeing on the, up until now through December. You talked about, did you say transportation or no? Transportation, while it's flat in that we're not seeing an unexpected increase, it is still between three and 5% year over year of what we're tracking. So when you add a combination of, what's wrong, I'm sorry.
It does. So it's all included in that overall, what's wrong? Question was, and that also includes the transportation to and from the special education.
Is it all inclusive of those in that increase of three to 5%? So when you add all of those factors that you brought up, I'll reiterate, the major things that we are trying to account for that we don't have a crystal ball for are the CBA or the collective bargaining agreement for staff, our teachers, and support staff that are included in that collective bargaining agreement, and the results of this life safety and capital plan and enhanced accessibility study.
Thank you, Carl, for asking those questions. Matt, thank you for addressing them along with Jen. Any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the 2023 tax levy final hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second, thank you. May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye. Now we'll reopen our regular meeting. I will now call back to order the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education meeting for December 12, 2023. May I have a roll call vote, please? Just a roll call, please.
Ms. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. LaBert?
Is it here?
You're here.
It's here, here.
Mr. Karar?
I am here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're getting very confusing. Okay, let's get started. Our board president is unable to be here this evening, so there will not be a president's report. We'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. Pause for effect as we change presentations. Thank you so much, Alice. Here are the topics that we are going to talk. Tonight is superintendent's report is promised to be brief and full of wonderful information. So we are going to talk about thought leadership, the book study that the board is engaging in, a new idea that we just introduced last week, which is superintendent advisory council, and then just remind everybody of the upcoming holiday break. Around thought leadership, there has been a philosophy for this district of how are we able to contribute to fellow districts in our local, state, and national level? And a great example, we have two examples, one of which is the joint annual presentation that was in downtown, that all school boards were invited across the country, excuse me, across the state. And we had the pleasure of presenting, we being the cabinet, as well as Annie Helms, our president, from 67, and Dr. John Vensen from 115. And we talked through the relationship and the partnership that the board has with the administration and how that is a symbiotic relationship. And we talked about how 14 board members are able to work together in a shared services environment. And I was exceptionally pleased with what we were able to share. Yes, we are in a work in progress, but there was much to celebrate. And people walked away with questions. And actually, a person that was in the audience is coming to observe one of our upcoming board retreats this week. And that is, I'll jump to that quickly, which is the board book study. So in that presentation, we talked about the work that the boards are doing with A.J. Crable and the research that we're doing on his book, Great on Their Behalf. There was a joint meeting in November with both boards coming together to read this text. And then this week, Wednesday, all of you are aware that 67 will be meeting at Ragdale tomorrow night for the retreat with 67. And then Thursday at the West Campus, the 115 board member or board team will be meeting with A.J. And the hope is that we are going to take everything that we have produced from strat plan, metrics, this book study, and come together and look at how the board is going to focus around student outcomes and their goals and work through committees. Jumping back, I was also able to present last week to a group of superintendents from across the country on the state of the superintendency, what we are learning here in Lake Forest, and sharing our story about how we're celebrating in the spite of some current challenges that every district is seeing across the country. I started or grounded the conversation with, there has been a tremendous amount of turnover in the education field. And you could put this for teachers, you could put this for cabinet levels. But I was speaking to a group of superintendents, so I highlighted that between March of 2020 and September 2022, 50% of the superintendents were replaced in urbans or the largest districts in the country. In the 13,000 districts in the U.S., the turnover increased on an annual basis from 14% to 17%. And people are citing through the RAND research, people being superintendents, that 80% of them are citing that their job is often or always stressful. And 88% of them are saying that the largest thing that is impacting stress is the political issues that we are talking about as a society. I grounded that research to say to the group, yes, we're experiencing all of that in Lake Forest, but here is how we are harnessing those challenges. And we're moving forward through the portrait, the strategic plan, the metrics, the outreach that Melissa and her team are doing with partnering with our community, the book study that I just talked about in the retreats. So it was not doom and gloom. It was you can move forward in this environment and find success with your community, your board, and your administration and staff. The third topic I like to talk about is the superintendent advisory council that we just announced last week. This is a new outreach for our community members, asking them if they would participate in a, an opportunity to advise myself as the leader on hot topic issues that they may have or hot topics that we want their feedback on. So we have open applications right now, and we'll be collecting them through December 21. We will be notifying candidates through January, around the week of January 15. And we will be meeting with this group quarterly, the first one being Monday, January 29 at 7:00 p.m. We wanted to announce that first meeting ahead of the or during the application process. The hope is that we are going to capture voices that do not have outlets through our regular channels. So we're adding a new channel for partnership with our community to get additional and new voices in on how we can best serve the communities that we are working with across Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Nullwood. This is a brand new idea, so I'm sure it will evolve. But it's another way in which we've, we are championing communication, championing transparency, and inviting people in to help us create the best environments for our students and for our communities. Holiday, the holiday break is on the horizon. Winter break is, I think it's exceptionally long this time. I don't know if anybody else feels that way. But I, we are encouraging our families and our staff to take the time they need to recharge. Winter break begins at the close of school day on December 22, and school resumes Wednesday, January 10. And we wish our families and our staff the very best as they take a beat and hopefully spend time with people that they love and friends and family in that category, of course. Thank you. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Montgomery. The board will now hear public comments subject to Board Policy 2.230. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It is hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. At this point in the evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Please hold all other comments until the following opportunity for public comment later during tonight's meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move into reports, starting with True North Educational Cooperative Update, Joanne Ford Halverson. Thank you.
Hello. Good to be back here. I'm Joanne Ford Halverson, Director of Student Services.
You have to use the mic. I'm so sorry. It's, you can walk around and carry it as long as the court.
I did that last year, yes. It wasn't pretty. Okay. Really. This is not my style. What's that? Absolutely.
Check, check.
Is this cutting into my 20-minute?
It's cutting into your four-minute, yes.
Good evening. Is this working? Oh, great. Okay. I gotta press buttons with two hands, though. This'll be interesting. Thanks, thanks, Yana. Okay. Thanks, thanks, Yana. Okay, now that we're set up and ready to roll here. So I came here tonight to talk about our True North and our partnership with True North, but I want to, for some of our newer board members, give a little bit of background information as to the why and the importance of that relationship. So for special education, I'm just gonna go over some quick basics here. We are governed by the federal law, the Individual, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, I need to slow down here, so, which guarantees a free and appropriate public education to all students who are identified with a disability. A big tenet of that is providing a least restrictive environment, and I'll give a little bit more information about that. So we are required to educate students with disabilities alongside their non-disabled peers, and the law clearly outlines that. So to do that, we really have to be cognizant of how we're providing that support, and when we look at the impact of a student's disability, we have to ensure that we're providing, you know, the full use of supplementary aids and services before we would ever consider educating them outside of that general education classroom. And that's important because it's not a easy thing to do, and it takes a lot of specialized training and support, and that's really part of our True North partnership. So as I, as I mentioned, before we would consider, you know, if this isn't supporting our students, we would want to ensure that we've considered that full range of supplementary aids and services. So for special education services, they're, they're not a place. Those services can go anywhere, they go to the student, and there's also no research that supports that segregated instruction. So the law focuses on supports in the general education classroom, because 30 years of research have shown that when we segregate students, we don't get better outcomes. So some of those services, and here's like a long list straight from what's in the law, but, so that specially designed instruction, so that, when we talk about that service that's provided directly to the student, all these specialized staff are providing that specially designed instruction. So we have it provided by special education teachers, counselors, social workers, OTs, PTs, adaptive physical education, assistive technology, and all of these folks here have specialized training. And often, when we need those services for our students, we don't need a ton of service, we need some service, we're not a huge district. And so part of that partnership is pooling those resources so that we can have high-quality staff, and we actually can find the staff, because half the trouble right now is finding someone to fulfill these roles, who has that qualification and specialized training. So part of that partnership gives us access to really highly-trained and quality staff. So the general service delivery model here, if you see like the least restrictive to the most restrictive, the majority of our students are educated in that general education classroom, receiving special education supplementary aids and services. And so again, that's where the majority of our students are provided service. In a special education classroom, a small number of our students are still, go to a separate classroom where they're just with a special education teacher or related service provider and receive that direct instruction. Some, oops, sorry, go back here, I skipped over, special school. So we have a very small number of students who we cannot provide an education to in our, in our home school, in our home district, and those students are transported to another campus where they are provided that education. And again, True North, we have that partnership with them, and so we do utilize some of their programming, Arbor Academy, North Shore Academy. So for students with very intensive needs, often there's, they're very impacted by their disability, and so, you know, we have access to some of that programming, so they have students from all over the Lake County area, but being a part of that cooperative, they make sure that we have access to that before others who are not part of the cooperative. And in that relationship, we actually still maintain the connection, because we're those students' home district, and our staff have collaborated with the educators there. So when we bridge students back to our district, we really understand their needs very well, and we're in a great position for them to come back and be a part of their home school again. And then continuing down the, the continuum, homebound services and hospital and residential, so those would be the most restrictive placements that a student may experience. Okay. So, this is data from our most recent school report card, so you can see the majority of our students are serviced in that general education classroom. So 91% of students with an IEP are serviced in the general education, are participating in their classrooms for 80% or more of the day. A small number of students, 8%, are 40 to 79% of their day in general education, and then 1% of our students are in that separate facility as I just described. Okay, so supporting our student growth in ELA, again, this is from our, our school report card, and I want to highlight here, as I talked about that educating students in the general education classroom, this is really important, because this, this is our focus here in our department. You can see five years ago how large that gap was in our district, we're in the light green there, and that's comparing students with IEPs to their non-disabled peers. And fast forward to post-pandemic till now, you can see that we have been closing that gap, and also the, the level of proficiency, so the number of students who are proficient, that has been raising over time, so from 14% to 22%. And that is something that we continue to focus a lot on, not just for our general education students, but for, for all students. And so some of our department's work and that collaboration with True North has really been, you know, how do we support students in accessing that general education, and also providing them with the intensive supports that they need. And again, the data with math as well. So, as I spoke to, our new strategic plan is focused on that goal one, excellence for all learners, and providing access for all learners for rigorous and engaging education. And some of those services, we have coaches from True North who support all of our buildings, and they really have a lot of specialized training. They have all been providers in special education in addition to a strong skill set in coaching. So when our students with significant behavioral needs, really challenging disabilities, we call in the best of the best to support that team and support our staff in problem-solving and figuring out what is the next step that we can do to make sure that we are on target and hitting those goals for our students. And again, empowering our school communities, part of that is feeling like you are a part of the school community. And again, we have had a focus across our buildings, excuse me, and that continues, and those coaches are definitely a, a part of that training as well. So I've spoken to some of these things, but the professional learning that True North provides, in addition to the staff and their specialized training, they provide a lot of professional development that would be challenging for us to also provide just as our, as our little district here in District 67. And when I say all staff, I really mean all staff, because we've had almost all of our admin team attend an adaptive schools training. So it's not just growing the skill set of our teachers, they're also supporting the skill set of our administrators through increasing our skills around effective teaming and collaboration. We, again, some of our SLPs participate in a professional learning community, so they're connecting with other SLPs in those 18-member districts. Excuse me, crisis prevention and intervention, so part of the law requires that we train staff around restraint and timeout, and that is a portion of that training. Trauma-informed practices, again, as a part of that, training for our teaching assistants, professional book studies, and specially-designed instruction. And then our building coaches attended the cognitive training that True North hosted as well. So again, it, it impacts all staff in our system. And, so, again, the other piece, I've mentioned a lot of this already, but the staffing that we are provided through True North, these are all staff who work across all of our buildings, and again, those are some of the needs that we would probably be unable to fill considering the market right now, because we don't need a full-time person, we need part of an FTE, and those are really challenging to provide. So, I think, oh yeah, and I've mentioned already the, the schools, the NSAE and Arbor Academy. So really, to conclude, when we think about it from the lens of our students, all of our students are benefiting from the support of our partnership with True North. Our OT support, so this is something that is a gened initiative, where we have all students receiving support from an occupational therapist in our early childhood and kindergarten classrooms. We are increasing the skill set of all of our staff through the professional learning, and again, supporting the connection to a larger community on the North Shore here with those member districts. And I think my, I guess if you have any questions before I conclude, I hope that was less than 20 minutes.
Thank you, Joanne. Any questions? We appreciate the robust report, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. First up, the education committee.
Yeah, I will be brief, I will just, I have attached to our agenda, meeting minutes from October and November, so those will stand as my report. There's a lot of discussion that we had on IAR test results and MAP growth, that was the, the bulk of it. We also got to meet Jenny Parker, our new math specialist, who was wonderful. So if you want further details, you can look at those meeting minutes.
Thank you, Monica.
One other thing, the November meeting minutes are in a draft state, so they have not been approved by the committee yet, so they are subject to minor changes.
Thank you for that. Finance and Operations Committee, Carl.
Mine's just a report, so you can read them, they're final, so go with it. Yeah, so we had our meeting Thursday morning, November 30th, and we discussed a five-year projection and the inputs and outputs for the future budgets. We also discussed some of the levy information that we are getting ready to vote on a little bit later. For the full report, I recommend everybody go to that agenda and click on that, it's a great budget development 101 type of course, and highly recommend it for everybody. So our next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday morning, January 25th, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, moving on to liaison reports, starting with True North Educational Cooperative 804. There is no report on that this evening. How about Legislative Liaison, Mark?
Sounded like a new title. Uh, just a few notes on the legislative front. Last month, as Matt referred to, there was the triple I conference, and part of that conference was voting on several IASB resolutions. Two resolutions were passed, and we as a board discussed these resolutions, and I voted consistent with the board's discussions. The two resolutions that passed were, one was supporting legislation that would provide funding for school resource officers for all schools, and then the second resolution that passed is supporting a revision to licensing and training for school bus drivers, to revert back to pre-2023 requirements and allowing for more local training and licensing for school bus drivers to increase the available pool of school bus drivers. One other thing to report on is on the Illinois legislative front. One bit of news that came out of the fall veto session is that the Invest in Kids Act has a sunset provision built into it on January 1st, 2024. That's the Illinois version of a school voucher. There was some discussion over trying to extend that. All those discussions failed, so that act will now expire on January 1st, 2024, which is a, in my eyes, a victory for public schools. So good news on that front. That is it for the legislative front.
Thank you, Mark. APT Executive Board Meeting.
Yeah, there's a couple of big things that APT had going on that I wanted to highlight. They've had the visiting author come to all the elementary schools. This year, they had New York Times bestseller Kate Messner. She was a big hit, she was here on November 15th, and they also had the visiting scientist, where they had Liberty Balloon Company treated the kids to an interactive lesson on hot air balloons, so the pictures from that looked pretty cool. The Thanksgiving food drive was a huge success this year. So last year, we provided 500 meals, this year, they provided 600 meals, so they knocked it out of the park. And a special thank you to the Cole family and MAI Capital Management, who donated a turkey to go with every meal. So that's especially exciting this year, and that's a lot of meals that really make a difference to some of the neighboring communities. The last thing is the DPM eighth-grade service initiative continues this year. It's a cause that's near and dear to my and Megan's heart, since we helped implement that this year, or last year. And they kicked it off with an assembly at DPM to talk about service, and they had Commander Rebecca Calder come speak. So last year, Megan had her come speak to our APT leaders, and she was phenomenal, so they invited her back to DPM. And so, of course, we had to go see her in action. She was the first female graduate of Top Gun. She shared some really amazing footage from the plane's point of view, which was just cool. Croya was there with her Top Gun gear. It was a really cool experience, she's an impressive woman, and she was an inspiration to our students, I think they liked it. And aside from that, holiday festivities and class parties are being planned at all the schools, so everyone's getting in the spirit.
Thank you, Monica. Megan requested to provide a verbal update on the Spirit of 67.
Thank you, yes. So the Spirit, this is a report from Courtney, their president, "In the spirit of giving, the Spirit of 67 Foundation has been putting together moling spices for past stakeholders, over $500 donation with a postcard including recent grants in D67 schools to keep donors informed of what we have been up to. We are hoping that this strengthens our community relationships and reignites some past donors." They are also looking to improve their communication, so they're filming three videos. The first one's explaining the grant process and the importance. The second one is a PSA of the Boundless Adventures Field Trip Grant, and how impactful that was for the students and staff that went on it. And the third one is the differences between the Spirit and the APT, and how each parent organization works within the district. And finally, they've begun planning their two future events. One will be a spring online school and community-based island auction, which may have a family night on the final night of the auction. And the second one, the next official event, will be the Fall Home and Garden Tour, September 26th of 2024. They already have some homes committed and are very excited to start planning this event, and they wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you, Megan. All right, next up are action items. The first action item is the adoption of the final 2023 tax levy. May I have a motion to adopt the final 2023 tax levy?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Karar?
Hi.
Ms. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of contract extension for Solient Health LLC. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve?
Sorry, one question. If it was in the board pack and I missed it, I apologize, but what are those positions for? I wasn't sure if that was spelled out.
Were they all teacher assistants?
Were they a continuation or a new?
New.
Positions?
We had to extend the amount of the contract that we have with them already to bring in more people.
more people.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the contract extension for Solient Health LLC?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Consent Agenda is next. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, which include: Approval of Disbursements, Payrolls, and Financial Statements, September 2023; Approval of Human Resources Report; Hires, Resignation, Retirements, Changes of Assignment, Leaves of Absence, Stipends, Activities, Athletics, Test Prep; Minutes of a Joint Special Meeting, November 14th, 2023; Minutes of an Executive Session, November 14th, 2023; Minutes of a Regular Meeting and Workshop, November 14th, 2023; Release of Executive Session Minutes, March 2023 through August 2023. May I have a motion? I think I--
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Foya requests. Patrick Garrity, one of one, completed. Civic Foya, four of four, completed. Jonah Meadows from The Patch, one of one, completed. Catherine Casey, one of one, completed. Patrick Lee, one of one, completed. Jeff Brinkett, one of one, in progress. Patty Flesser, one of one, completed. Next, we have another opportunity for public participation. At this point, the board will now hear a second opportunity for public comment, subject to Board Policy 2 dot 230. This opportunity for public comment will be limited to 60 minutes. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. Announcements, Wednesday, December 13th, 2023, is a special board meeting at 5:00 PM at the Ragdale Foundation. Monday, December 18th, 2023, is the Joint District Policy Committee. It will be held at Lake Forest High School West Campus, 5:15 PM. Friday, December 22nd, 2023, through Monday or till Monday, January 8th, 2024, is winter break. There will be no school for students and staff. Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, school resumes for students. Monday, January 15th, 2024, Martin Luther King Day, no school for students and staff. Thursday, January 25th, 2024, will be the Finance and Operations Committee at 7:30 AM here at Lake Forest High School West Campus. Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, the Joint District Education Committee will be held at 7:30 AM, again, here at Lake Forest High School West Campus. Friday, February 16th, 2024, Tri-District Institute Day, no school for students. Monday, February 19th, 2024, President's Day, no school for students or staff. And Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, is the Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM here at Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. May I have a meeting, may I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board Meeting for December 12th, 2023?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye. Yes.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.